Economically and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSU's stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide.
Thank you for your patience. Again, I apologize for the delay on our closed session required us to make a couple of modifications. Well, good morning and welcome back for our final day of this month's meeting. Before I begin the agenda, I want to do two things. One, I'd like to announce that the Board of Trustees has extended the search timeframe for the next president of California State Polytechnic University Humboldt. The trustees, chancellor, and our search advisory and trustees committees do so united in our commitment to inclusive excellence as we work to identify the very best candidate to lead Cal Poly Humboldt, a truly transformational university. Information on the search will be shared in the coming weeks. Yes, and I do want to especially thank President Spagna for serving and continuing to serve in that position while we go through this process. We greatly appreciate your time, sir. Thank you so much. And also, before I turn it over to Chancellor Garcia for two important announcements, I want to thank a lieutenant governor for attending. You are so welcome here, and we really appreciate you coming and serving with us. So thank you very much. I will now turn it over to Chancellor Garcia for two important announcements.
Thank you, Chair Clark. Good morning y buenos dias. I am very pleased to announce the appointment of two outstanding leaders to critically important vice chancellor's positions. First, earlier this meeting in closed session, the board approved the appointment of Frank Ultalte as Vice Chancellor of Human Resources and Chief Human Resources Officer. He has deep experience across all aspects of his field and comes to the CSU from Kaiser Permanente, where he was system senior vice president of human resources. He oversaw all human resources operations of the organization. Frank will begin in his role on April 14th. The next appointment is a name that is very familiar to many of us. Patrick Lenz has accepted the appointment as interim executive vice chancellor of business and finance and chief financial officer. As you know, Patrick has unmatched experience in budgetary and finance issues impacting California public higher education and has recently served the CSU with distinction as a special consultant. Patrick's tenure, who is here with us, will begin on July 1st. I will provide additional information about these two appointments, as well as continue in our conversations. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and express my deep appreciation for the outstanding service of interim vice chancellor for human resources, Al Lydicote. He is well-known for a long and distinguished career and will return to work with President Armstrong, Cal State San Luis Obispo. He is an exceptional leader. Thank you so much for your service. And of course, I want to thank the distinguished career, which I think is almost 12 years, of executive vice chancellor, chief financial officer, Steve Relly. He has given his heart, his soul, and sometimes his blood for this wonderful CSU that he loves. Please join me in thanking him for his exceptional service. And as you all know, in the CSU way, we will celebrate these two exceptional leaders more fully at a later date. Chair Clark, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Chancellor Garcia. On behalf of the board, I'd like to add my congratulations and best wishes for continued success to the exceptional leaders. Approval of executive compensation will be addressed momentarily in the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. And amended materials have been distributed and posted online at the trustee's agenda website. On that high note, we will now move on with today's agenda. Trustee Fong, will you please convene the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel?
Thank you very much, Chair Clark. Will the meeting on the Committee for University and Faculty Personnel please come to order? The committee will first consider today's consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Does any committee member wish to remove any item for separate discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Jeannie, second.
I didn't hear. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The items listed on the consent agenda have been approved. Today, the committee has three items on the discussion agenda. Item three, executive compensation for the president of California State Polytechnic University Humboldt, has been removed from the agenda as announced by Chair Clark. Moving on to item four is an action item providing executive compensation for the vice chancellor for human resources and chief human resources officer of the California State University. The amended item was provided in a handout and will be presented by Chancellor Garcia. Chancellor Garcia, please begin.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. As I just noted a moment ago, two outstanding senior leaders will be joining the CSU and serving on the chancellor's council. Frank Ultalte has accepted the position of vice chancellor of human resources and chief human resources officer. Patrick Lenz will also serve as CSU's interim executive vice chancellor and chief financial officer. As I said earlier, I couldn't be more pleased. Today, I am recommending the approval of their compensation. Frank Ultalte, in the agenda item before you, is in the following item. Frank Ultalte comes to the CSU from Kaiser Permanente, where he served as system senior vice president of human resources. In his role, he oversaw all HR operations across one of the nation's largest healthcare networks with more than 215,000 employees, operating 40 hospitals, and 618 medical offices. Frank has deep experience across all HR functions and operations, from HR service delivery and technology modernization to compliance, labor relations, and cultivating a more collaborative, transparent, and proactive workplace culture. In addition, and importantly, he has longstanding experience as a committed and collaborative executive leader and strategic advisor, which will serve him well as a member of the council. Above all, he brings to the position core values that are fully aligned with the CSU. Throughout this national recruitment, he has articulated a commitment to and clear vision for fostering an inclusive culture, attracting and retaining diverse talent, and ensuring equitable opportunities for students, faculty, and staff. Frank, a first-generation college student, earned a bachelor's degree in management from St. Mary's College and a master's in organizational development from the University of San Francisco. I should also add that he is the proud father of two CSU graduates, one who is currently pursuing his MBA at San Diego State. As presented in the material before you, I am recommending that Frank Ultalte receive an annual salary of $360,000 effective April 14, 2025. The salary recommended does not exceed the incumbent's salary by more than 10%, and is therefore consistent with CSU Board of Trustees' policy on compensation. In accordance with existing policy, a monthly auto allowance of $1,000 and standard benefits for executive classified employees are provided, and also according to policy, a temporary monthly housing allowance of $3,500 for relocation for six months. To members of the committee and full board, I request your approval of the compensation for vice chancellor of human resources and chief human resources officer as published in the item before you. Trustee Fong, that concludes my presentation, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Chancellor Garcia, for your presentation. Item four, the approval of executive compensation for the vice chancellor of human resources and chief human resources officer of the California State University is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. May I have a preliminary motion from a committee member to approve this item?
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions from the board? It appears there are no questions or comments. There has been a motion and a second to approve item four. Only committee members may vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is approved. Moving on to item five, which is an action item providing executive compensation for the interim executive vice chancellor of business and finance and chief financial officer of the California State University. The amended item was provided in a handout and will be again presented by Chancellor Garcia.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. The second appointment to the chancellor's council is a leader that we all know and respect and trusted throughout the CSU. I am so pleased that Patrick Lenz has accepted the appointment to serve as interim executive vice chancellor of business and finance and chief financial officer. Patrick has been involved with California operating budgets, capital outlay issues, and various state financing projects for over 40 years. He started when he was 12, including more than 30 years in public higher education, having represented the California Community College, the University of California, and of course, the CSU on these issues before the governor and the legislature. He began his career as a consultant with the Senate Committee on Finance before assuming the role of deputy director with the Senate Budget and Fiscal Review Committee and as chief consultant on higher education issues. More recently, Patrick has served as a consultant with the College Futures Foundation on a task force to address the future financing of higher education in California. He also authored "Paying for Space", a report focusing on innovative options to address the capital facility needs of public and private higher education facilities. And as most of you know, Patrick has also served recently as a senior advisor to the CSU, first to interim chancellor Kester and then to me. He has been instrumental in our state and federal advocacy efforts. He has also served as a valuable member of the Sustainable Financial Model Task Force and played a critical role in developing our long-term tuition and financial aid policy. Currently, he is assisting the CSU with advancing the recommendations of the Sustainable Financial Model Task Force Report and issues specific to the '25-'26 CSU budgets. I should also note that Patrick is made in the CSU and a proud San Jose State grad, where he earned a degree in political science. Now to committee business. Today, I recommend that Patrick Lenz receive an annual salary of $386,529 effective July 1, 2025. This is the same salaries received by the current incumbent. A monthly allowance, as provided by policy, of $33,500 will be provided while serving as interim executive vice chancellor. And in accordance with existing policy, a monthly audio allowance of $1,000 and standard benefits for executive classified employees are provided. To members of the committee and full board, I request your approval of the compensation for the interim executive vice chancellor of business and finance and chief financial officer as published in the item before you. Trustee Fong, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chancellor Garcia, for your presentation. Item five, the approval of executive compensation for the interim executive vice chancellor of business and finance and chief financial officer of the California State University is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. May I have a preliminary motion from a committee member to approve this item?
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions from the board? It appears there are no questions or comments. There has been a motion and a second to approve item five. Only committee members may vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. Item six is an information item providing an update on civil rights programs and services. The item will be presented by interim vice chancellor for human resources, Dr. Al Lydicote, executive advisor for civil rights, Peter Lim, and Chico State president, Dr. Steve Perez. Interim vice chancellor Lydicote, please begin.
Thank you, Trustee Fong, and good morning to the members of the Board of Trustees. I will begin our presentation with an update on how we have ensured leadership continuity following the departure of AVC Haley Schwartzkopf and the progress we have made building out all areas of our civil rights programming and services team. Then we will briefly review our recent progress on the California State Auditor's recommendations, followed by an overview of the shifting legal landscape and civil rights and the steps we have taken to address these changes. Finally, I am very excited to share that we will end on a high note with a presentation by Chico State's president, Steve Perez, who will highlight the successes and challenges Chico has had with implementing their civil rights plan and program review. This will provide another opportunity for you to see how our universities are invested in and committed to achieving the impactful culture change that we are seeking through our civil rights work. We have been hard at work to build a strong and resilient team committed to fostering and sustaining a welcoming and nurturing campus environment where all are safe, supported, and empowered, while honoring the humanity of all of our students, faculty, staff, and community members. We are enthusiastic and proud to share with you that our progress continues and our momentum remains strong. With the recent transition of the AVC for Civil Rights Programming and Services, the chancellor's office has appointed Pete Lim to serve as executive advisor for Civil Rights Programming and Services. Mr. Lim has over 20 years of extensive civil rights experience. He was a partner at an AM Law 100 firm, where he specialized in Title IX compliance and was a special victims' unit prosecutor for 10 years. Notably, he served as interim Title IX coordinator at San Jose State University for over three years, playing a key role in achieving the early resolution of a four-year monitoring period instituted by the Department of Justice. In addition, we restructured the system-wide senior directors under the leadership of Alex Persley, our interim executive director for civil rights. In her role, she will provide day-to-day leadership to the system-wide directors, and she will oversee appeals and ensure the smooth operation of initiatives led by the chancellor's office, including the civil rights program reviews and implementation of a CSU-wide case management system. We are also pleased to report that we hired and onboarded two senior directors. A search is currently underway for the fifth and final senior director, who, when appointed, will complete this team that was formed from the ground up over the last 18 months. Laura Anson, who has been temporarily serving as a regional senior director, has now been reassigned to her new role of system-wide senior director for investigations, resolutions, and whistleblower complaints. While Sue McCarthy, who also was temporarily serving as a regional senior director, has started her new role, a position of system-wide senior director for civil rights prevention, education, and training. These leadership changes and reassignments are designed to ensure strong, experienced leadership and continuity during this transitional period as we conduct a national search for the next associate vice chancellor for civil rights programming and services. This search is now well underway, and I have full confidence in our civil rights team and their ability to provide leadership, expert guidance, and continue their work to support the CSU universities. I would now like to transition to a very brief update on our progress made towards the necessary implementation of the California State Auditor's recommendations. The chancellor's office submitted a status update to the California State Auditor earlier this month that indicates 15 of the 16 recommendations have been fully and timely implemented by the CSU. The chancellor's office is awaiting confirmation from the California State Auditor following their review of our work. As a reminder, the only outstanding recommendation is the implementation of a CSU-wide case management system, which has a recommended completion date of July 2026. The chancellor's office selected Case IQ as the vendor and implementation partner for its unified case management system. The implementation phase of this project is already underway with an initial cohort that includes the chancellor's office, Cal Maritime, Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and Sacramento State. We will continue to update the board on the progress of the case management system as the implementation moves forward. Next, I invite Pete Lim, executive advisor for civil rights programming and services. Next, I invite Pete Lim, executive advisor for civil rights programming and services, to share an update on our changing civil rights legal landscape.
Thank you for the warm introduction, Vice Chancellor Lydicote. Given the rapidly changing civil rights environment, it is important to continue today's presentation by highlighting the impact that recent legal changes have had on students, employees, and civil rights practitioners across the CSU system. In our written update to the board, we shared that the 2024 Title IX regulations established under the Biden administration were struck down nationwide by a federal court in Kentucky in early January. Several weeks later, the Department of Education issued significant guidance documents stating very clearly that it would enforce the 2020 Title IX regulations that were in effect prior to those 2024 regulations. The CSU, like every other institution across the country, had to immediately pivot to align any pending cases with the 2020 Title IX regulations. This change also resulted in the need to immediately revise the CSU's system-wide non-discrimination policy. While the chancellor's office continued to provide support to our university partners, this process instituted a measure of uncertainty and confusion, especially among our students and employees directly affected by these changes. We have listened closely to their voices to ensure that their concerns and feelings are addressed with care and clarity. The chancellor's office is prioritizing enhanced support to ensure that every member of our campus communities is provided with clear guidance and reassurance during this time. The Department of Education has also released a number of Dear Colleague letters or guidance. While these letters do not have the force or effect of law, they do signal how the Department of Education interprets a legal issue or interprets existing laws and how they seek to enforce them. The Department of Education indicated that further guidance will be issued in the future. The civil rights team at the chancellor's office will work closely with OGC and our university partners to review and respond appropriately.
Thank you. Thank you, Executive Advisor Lim. We will continue to uphold our CSU commitment as a university system so our diverse communities of students, faculty, and staff who we serve are able to thrive free from discrimination, harassment, in all of their dimensions. Another area of critical work undertaken by the chancellor's office is to support and provide oversight of the university partners in the implementation of each recommendation from the COSIN assessment through the university's implementation plans. At prior meetings, the board requested information about how the work of civil rights is being operationalized on our campuses and transforming the culture for our students and employees. Today, President Steve Perez from Chico State will join us to share his campus's experience, including successes and challenges, with their implementation plan and civil rights program review. President Perez, I invite you to share your update on the civil rights work underway at Chico State University.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Lydicote. And Pete, it's good to see you. I've had the pleasure of working with Pete in the past. I'm glad he's here, working with the chancellor's office. I've learned a lot from you over the years, and I'm glad you're here. Thank you, Chancellor Garcia, Chair Clark, trustees, chancellor's office staff, students, and my fellow presidents. I'm happy to be here to talk about the experiences at Chico State regarding the implementation plan and civil rights program review. After receiving the COSIN report for Chico State, we assembled a diverse cross-functional implementation team that brought together our civil rights professionals, faculty, students, staff, my chief of staff, and leaders from academic affairs, student affairs, university communications, human resources, and faculty affairs. It was critical to bring all these voices to the table to develop our plan to foster a welcoming and nurturing campus environment. Together, they forged our implementation plan from our common core set of values and desire to hold Chico State properly accountable as we create a community where all members are safe, supported, and empowered. We were delighted to learn that Chico State's implementation plan was well-received by the chancellor's office and the COSIN team, and it served as a model for other university campuses. Our plan's format was adopted by the chancellor's office as a consistent template for all CSU implementation plans. We quickly determined that we needed additional dedicated resources to realize our vision for civil rights and that our success would be dependent on many other campus partners. We made a commitment to prioritize investments that included the establishment of a new unit within human resources called Climate and Culture, and we also established a new director of Climate and Culture that facilitates informal resolution. We added responsibility of prevention and education to a case manager and are looking at ways to expand our programming. It's critical to engage the campus community as we seek to transform our campus culture with respect to civil rights. Our work in this area includes establishing an annual communications plan with recurring campaigns to elevate awareness and highlight resources, including focusing on Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month, notification about campus policies, and showcasing campus and community events and services. As a small example, my cabinet and I were proud to visibly support and participate in the Wear Purple event for Domestic Violence Awareness Month last October. The development of an impactful tagline for our Office of Equal Opportunity and Dispute Resolution, as voted for by our campus community, and it says, "Your Voice, Your Rights, Our Commitment." In addition to our campus engagement and communications efforts, we needed to partner with the campus community more deeply in prevention, education, and thus, our work so far has included: We relocated our Title IX office to our Student Services Center. It's the building where we have most of our services for our students, including financial aid, advising. It's where they go to when they need some help. We moved it from our university's primary administration building into that building. By finding a campus home that feels more accessible and welcoming to all, we hope to enhance the approachability and awareness of its services. And I'm hearing it's working. We're actually getting walk-in traffic into the office of people just walking by, asking questions, and looking for help. We're provisioning an in-person training session for employees and students. We've had 56 in-person trainings and 2,704 attendees since January of 2024. We also created a new online training dashboard that you can find on our Title IX website. The dashboard shows the date of each training, the number of attendees, the program or audience that participated, and the number of trainings we've held per month. We require and track completion of training for supervisors, including administrators, department chairs, our provost advisory council, and associate deans. In addition to that, we also recognized that we needed to provide resources and assistance to support community members who experienced hurtful interactions. As part of these efforts, Chico State established an Other Conduct of Concern Subcommittee of our implementation team. And the university's plan in this area consists of four phases, including the development of community agreements and the provision of expanded training and professional development around conflict resolution and restorative justice. I think these are actually some of the most important things we're doing on our campus: the development of community agreements, which are agreements of how we're going to treat each other, how we expect to be treated when we come to work, when we go to school, when we live on our campus, and getting the community buy-in and agreement on them. I think it's going to be powerful in working through our culture. Starting in fall 2024, the Director of Climate and Culture launched a series of conflict resolution training courses focusing on interpersonal conflict, restorative justice, and other forms of remedial responses. In fall 2024, Chico State participated in the civil rights program review process. Across each of the six identified review categories, our university received the top two rankings in 22 of the 30 categories. And in the eight remaining categories, we received some very helpful areas for continued growth, and we shared those with our campus. I think I'm one of the few people that enjoys having reviews and having audits. I've told this to Vlad personally. I don't do all of the paperwork that goes through it, but I do get to find out what we're doing well and how we can do better. And that's the point of what we do in our audits and our reviews, and we learned a lot in this as well. We were encouraged by the recognition from the program review of the executive leadership team's support for the Office of Equal Opportunity and Dispute Resolution, with the system-wide director noting that the engagement and support of the executive leadership at Chico State may serve as an exemplar for our other university campuses. Our program review noted that the interviewees, who represented every aspect of campus life, made positive comments about the Equal Employment and Dispute Resolution Office for outreach, communication, and collaboration. The campus was also pleased to be commended for its collaborative partnerships and information-sharing techniques that were found to appropriately balance privacy, confidentiality, and necessary disclosures to maintain the safety of the entire campus community. As we continue to think about ways in which we can increase the reach of and engagement with our campus civil rights programming, we're exploring varied platforms for more readily distributing information to the campus community. We know that students in particular are accustomed to consuming information through multimedia, making formats such as video more relatable and effective in conveying messages. While we have a very high completion rate for our employee training, there's continued work to be done in increasing our student training completion, and we are reviewing incentive programs as well as looking at ways we can partner with student leaders to help make a cultural shift as we seek full engagement of our campus community members. This concludes my report on Chico State's civil rights update. I want to thank everyone on our implementation team, everyone in our Office of Equal Opportunity and Dispute Resolution, and in particular, Erica Romo, our director. They're doing tremendous work. I also would like to share my appreciation for the support and guidance we received through this process from the Civil Rights Programming and Services Team at the chancellor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, President Perez, for this update. It demonstrates your leadership and the university's commitment to the civil rights work that is so necessary and needed to transform our campuses into an environment of trust, respect, and support for all students, employees, and community members. We're also thankful for your contributions as a member of the Civil Rights Oversight Committee and your willingness to share and disseminate these best practices across the CSU. Over the coming months, we will shift our focus to carefully reviewing the progress all campuses have made on their implementation plans and determine how the system-wide Civil Rights Programming and Services Team can best support the universities as they continue to make progress on their implementation plans. Trustee Fong, this concludes the report on civil rights, and we're pleased to take any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you so much, President Perez, for sharing the excellent work that you're doing at Chico State. And welcome to our new advisor, Mr. Lim. It's so nice to see you again, Pete, after meeting you several years ago at San Jose State. We thank you for the presentation. Item six is an information item. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Trustee McGory.
Well, congratulations, President Perez. Sounds like you knocked it out of the park on this issue, but I still have this lingering concern about the staffing that we're engaged in hiring. I think the recommendation from COSIN was we would hire 82 or 83 FTEs to enforce, to better implement Title IX. Are we on track for that? Where are we at on that, the hiring, particularly in light of all the other financial issues we have?
Yes, we've received a total of, I think it was 15.6 or 15.9 million to help fortify the programs. Some of that money came to the chancellor's office, which is what we use to build out our central civil rights team, but campuses were also allocated funding, and many of those are using their funding for positions. And they've been in the process of hiring. They're not all finished with hiring, but similar to President Perez's comments, many of them have hired one or more positions with the funding that has come to them.
Yesterday, at public comment, we heard from a parent from Sonoma State that her daughter had been sexually assaulted as a freshman on the campus.
It was not the Sonoma State.
What was it? It was the... I'm sorry, it was Sloan, not Sonoma State. And that that incident had occurred in 2023 and that she had not heard back on the results of the Title IX investigation. I'd like to make sure, Jeff, that we follow up on that, but if I was a parent and my daughter was sexually assaulted and I didn't hear within two or three months about the results of the investigation, I would be extremely ticked off. And my concern, and I think Lieutenant Governor said the same thing in a couple of comments, that we create this bureaucracy, and this bureaucracy just winds through these complaints in kind of, I don't know, an abstract distant way. These complaints are so intensely personal that they need to be addressed really quickly. And the longer you wait, the less effective the discipline becomes, the less effective the whole process looks to the outside observer. And it has to have an incredible amount of confidence among the people who are involved in this, either the investigators or the people who are filing these complaints. And I just think we need to follow up on that, Jeff, in terms of whether that was true or not. But I just think we need to make sure with this new staff that we are responding to these complaints as quickly as we possibly can. And I know the attorney's going to advise us about due process and the abba-dabba-do and all this stuff that's going to drag it on, but if we get evidence that something happened, that person has to be removed from the campus. And the safety of these students and staff and faculty is paramount. And I just don't want, you know, I hated to hear that yesterday, to be a parent and have your daughter assaulted and not have heard back since 2023, that is just not acceptable, if it's the case. You know, you obviously have to look at it and establish whether that's true or not, but it's really important that we address these things as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Trustee McGory. I know we have been looking into that matter and will follow up. It's a specific situation, so...
I would like to give President Armstrong an opportunity to respond.
I will tell you that our team looked into that immediately yesterday, and due to FERPA, I cannot share any information, but I can tell you that our team followed process. And I can't really say more than that, but I can tell you that the process was followed with regard to that situation. And the FERPA privacy of the student, I can't say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate reference to my concern earlier about building a bureaucracy, a very expensive bureaucracy, particularly in these budget times. And while this absolutely is a priority, it seems to me another concern that we should be focused on is this idea that we hire an infrastructure of people whose responsibility it is to deal with inappropriate or illegal behavior on campus, and therefore, it is no longer the responsibility of the management that existed prior to bringing in these additional people who are focused on dealing with these kinds of situations. Are you taking specific, clear steps such that all management is aware of the process involved in dealing with instances of, you know, again, the whole variety of issues that could fall under harassment or assault or inappropriate behavior? And more than just refer it over, but also that managers, if circumstances start to appear, are equipped themselves and held responsible themselves for managing in those situations without just saying, oh, this isn't my problem, I'm going to refer it out?
Thank you for the question, because it really does get to the heart of what we do. We're organizations of people that are interacting with each other, a lot of people that are interacting with each other. And you're absolutely right. How we interact with each other is crucial, and we are doing exactly what you're saying. How we talk with our managers, how we train them to intervene when things are potentially at a lower level, and help people work together. I referenced the community agreements we've worked on. They're built on, similar to what they have at Fresno State, the principles of community. And we're talking about them extensively. We're working through trainings on how to use these principles of community at Fresno, but we've got our community agreements when things get tense, when they get heated at times. And we'll work through people and tell them, here's how you might want to interact in a different way, and here's how our managers can help intervene. There's a spectrum of different behaviors. Some of them are policy violations, some of them are not, but we still want to have a place where everybody knows that they're respected, knows that... a place where everybody knows that they're respected, knows that we have empathy for what they're working with. And so we're doing exactly those things. I can assure you, all my presidential colleagues take this exceptionally seriously. We lose sleep over various things. The thing we lose sleep over the most of is the health and well-being of the people on our campus, of our students and our faculty and staff. It's paramount to all of us.
Lieutenant Governor, thank you so much, because I think we're all very concerned. And I just want to underscore President Perez's comments. One of the things that I do is that in each of our evaluations for our presidents each year, there is a goal that I am going to meet with them every year about Title IX and other conducts of concern, and to explain to me what is happening on the campuses as also getting reports from our Vice Chancellor of HR to tell me what have been the cases, how have they gone through, because they're also monitoring that as well. So just want you to know that not only do I know that these presidents are on top of it, they'll be talking to me about it every time they come before me to look over their goals.
Thank you, Chancellor and President Perez, for just clarifying and confirming the work that has been done through the recommendations of Cozen O'Connor and our assessment. Next, we have Trustee Gilbert Lurie. I'm sorry, Jeff, did you want to respond once again?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a clarification that's frustrating for parents, and I can give multiple examples, I could give multiple examples, but because of FERPA, unless there's a FERPA release by the student, we cannot share information with parents. That's extremely frustrating for parents. As a parent, I can understand that, but that is the very clear aspect of the law.
Thank you very much, President Armstrong. Trustee Gilbert Lurie.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Fong. First of all, I do want to welcome Executive Advisor Peter Lim. I look forward to working with you, and I really appreciated this presentation. President Perez, you know, it really undermines for me, or underscores for me, that laws might change, and in this area, they're obviously continually changing, but the things that matter most, that we all know matter most on our campuses, that doesn't change, and that's the work that you're doing. There's nothing that you're doing about bringing your community together to understand how important it is for everyone on your campus to feel safe that is going to change with a law. It's just the process of how we intake the information that changes. So, you know, as you say, it's how we interact, and I love that we're making progress on that. Toward that end, first, I wonder if we, I imagine we do, because I know the emphasis the Chancellor places on systemness, but I wonder if there's a live forum for best practices among presidents in this area. So, for example, even move the Title IX office, and that had an impact, or here is our slogan. Like, if there were sort of an ongoing place for people to, for presidents to weigh in on what is having an impact, I think that would be helpful if it doesn't already exist. I wonder, and then I have just a couple other questions. I like the emphasis on transforming the culture, because that's clearly what we needed as a system. And I'm wondering, President Perez, with all these changes, it sounds so impactful, how you're able to measure whether that is felt on the campus. And as you know, on our task force, which I've really enjoyed working with you on, you know, that's what we're trying to get at. So I'm wondering if you have a sense already whether the culture feels that it's changing on your campus. And finally, it would be interesting for us to just hear what the obstacles are, if there were, if resources are an obstacle and what that would do, or, you know, what the obstacles are to truly transforming the culture.
Thank you for the question, Trustee Gilbert Lurie. I'm not very good at multi-part questions, so forgive me if I need to be reminded of some of it.
There are only two: can you feel the change in the culture and obstacles, and if there's a forum? Great.
Thank you. Well, we talk, the presidents talk all the time. We communicate with each other, we share those ideas, but there is a structured way, and part of that is the system review that we did in the fall. And some of the recommendations we got were information that were obtained from other universities that were going through the process as well. And so the group was looking at what are, was it five?
Yes.
Five different universities, how we all were doing. Some of the best practices from other universities were in our report, as you might consider doing these things as well. So there is a structured plan of doing it, and then certainly informal conversations. We're feeling it and we're seeing it across our campus. I've seen it, we actually, in our labor relations meetings. So when I meet with the heads of our unions, we've brought in an interruption statement that incorporates the words and the phrasing from our community agreements, talking about if you feel like the community agreements are not being followed, you should step in and interrupt, and then we model how that happens. I see it amongst our students. I've seen it in various other meetings where people are talking about, here's how we ought to be treating each other. Obstacles, funding is always an obstacle. We can always use more money to advertise better, to socialize it better, to build out more structures. In my mind, the biggest example of how it's going to work is when people see it in action. When somebody steps out of our norms and then is corrected, and then they step back into our norms, that's how it's really going to transform and spread across our campus. The biggest obstacle for us is time and examples.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Lopez.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I mean, what comes across to me is that both leadership and an emphasis on culture, not compliance, is really the sort of the secret sauce here that we're trying to get at here. I do have a question about the changes in the federal level, and I wondered if you could compare and contrast what was thrown out and what is now in effect, because we're going back to 2020. And I'm mindful of this for two reasons, and so my second question is, what are the impacts in this regard? When Cozen came to us, one of the things they said, one of the reasons this is so difficult is because there's always changes in the regs. And so when you go to implement, you're implementing one way, but then there's something that changes to another. Here we are, down the road, doing a great job, and now everything's changed. Could you first, and Peter Lim, could you do this, just compare and contrast what we thought we were going to be able to be working under and what we're now under, and then how that's affecting? Steve, maybe you could just speak how you're thinking about how this affects what you're doing.
Thank you for the question. The biggest difference between the 2024 regulations and the 2020 regulations really involve process and definitions. Under the 2020 regulations, the Department of Education defined Title IX sexual harassment very narrowly, and they also only required schools to regulate behavior that occurred in the United States and within our education program or activity, which has a very specific meaning under the Title IX Regulations 2020 version. So it narrowed the type of behavior that schools were required to regulate and the places and spaces that they were required to regulate that behavior. In addition, on procedures, the 2020 regulations required schools to adjudicate reported misconduct that occurred within those places and spaces and that fell within the criteria under a very prescriptive process that involved simply an investigation and a hearing with cross-examination. The 2024 regulations did something different. They expanded the definition of sexual harassment, thereby expanding the types of behaviors that schools were required to regulate, and they expanded the places and spaces that schools needed to regulate that conduct or reported misconduct. They also gave schools more latitude in how they adjudicated behavior, not necessarily requiring an investigation and hearing with cross-examination. When we went back to the 2020 regulations in January, the silver lining is our process and procedures that complied with the 2020 regulations as well as state law were in effect and in place as recently as July of 2024. So they were very familiar to our implementers on our 23 campuses. What we did with the 2024 version, what we did with the current version of the policy, is we wanted to make sure that we complied with both federal and state law, but we also wanted to make sure that we continued to protect our students from discrimination based on other protected statuses like sexual orientation and gender identity, and only also regulated behavior that was more expansive than that which is required under the 2020 regulations. What came out of that effort, that effort to make sure that we implemented trauma-informed practices that were compassionate and empathetic, that we continued to protect our students, staff, and faculty from behavior that went beyond what was required under the 2020 regulations, was a three-track system. And simply put, that three-track process addresses conduct that meets the criteria for the 2020 regulations, conduct that meets criteria for state-required laws, and all other conduct. So we tried and made every effort to create a new policy that was informed and continued to protect our students regardless of where they were and regardless, or based on conduct that was more expansive than that which was required under federal law.
Thanks, Pete. It's exceptionally complicated, in particular because sometimes it depends on the timing of an incident, which track things are going down, how it gets investigated, how it gets handled. It's really, really complicated. So the difficulty is, when an individual is coming into our Title IX office, our DHR office, they're coming into these offices, they've experienced trauma, they've experienced something very emotional, that's why they're there. And we have to, as Pete was talking, the intake has to be somewhat soft and understanding of that trauma, trauma-informed, as he said. At the same time, we have to be able to handle things in a very complicated environment. And so it's a real challenge to do both of those things at the same time. And so we're building out our offices in just this way. We want to make sure that when somebody comes in, they're treated with compassion, they're treated with understanding, but at the same time, we have to be able to treat it very systematically.
Thank you. Chair Clark.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. First of all, and from Vice Chancellor Lydicke, I really have appreciated your time with us, and you have done great work in this area, and I wish you Godspeed in your next position. Thank you for being here. President Perez, appreciate your updating us in terms of how you're doing on your campus, and it's very impressive. And Mr. Lim, we were able to meet before this meeting. I am so glad you're here. Even in the description or the explanation you just gave, you've shown a deep understanding in this area, and I know we're going to be well-served by you. I have an observation and a hope that I'd like to share. This board, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, and I'm going to keep doing it, this board is an oversight board. When I joined the board, I think I was told that the board is supposed to stay at about 30,000 feet. And, you know, broad policy, don't get down into the weeds. I think 30,000 feet is unacceptable. When I fly on a plane, I can't see anything at 30,000 feet. And yet, I'm not sure how high we should be, but we need to be high enough so that, I think the phrase was "trust and yet verify," my colleague quoting Reagan said. And we need that, and in real terms, but for circumstances that were very, very difficult for this system a few years ago. This kind of presentation, I would think, would be appropriate once a year, maybe every other year, because we, right now, are getting into the guts of federal law. President Armstrong used the acronym FERPA. I think that's the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And you gave us an insight, President Armstrong, that would be counterintuitive. And one of the strengths of this board is our diversity of experience. And yet, much of what you all do on campuses, much of what you all do in terms of this system, making sure we're compliant, applies laws that are counterintuitive. In that regard, these kinds of presentations, I think, are absolutely invaluable to give a public airing to the incredible complexity of what your jobs are. And in that way, it is really, really good. I would like to get us into a more healthy posture. Title IX is of absolute critical importance. At the same time, in light of even the things we were talking about yesterday, this board needs to be working with the Chancellor to address matters of much larger magnitude in terms of the health of this institution. So my hope is that perhaps near the end of my term, we'll be, and I'll be with the concurrence of the board, we'll be able to go to a much, because right now, and we're going to continue on with this, we got to make sure, this board needs to make sure Title IX is being implemented correctly. But I'd like to get it on a cycle that's perhaps annual, and hopefully if the next Chair, Vice Chair Ramula, hopefully by the end of his term, and if not by the end of his term, certainly by the end of the next term, because otherwise, we're staying in the weeds. That all said, I will say, from my vantage point here now since last July, Chancellor, I will say, just as a general observation, I have seen times when I think the, I think Lieutenant Governor referred to the bureaucracy and Trustee McGory refers to the bureaucracy. I do think that there are times when, on occasion, I've seen this bureaucracy move extremely slow. And I hope, Chancellor, as you're getting even more comfortable in this position, you'll help us move on those issues. So I just wanted to make those comments, and my real hope is, because I do believe we are in the weeds at this point, but we have to be. And we didn't create that circumstance, but this is one of those things where we have to make sure that this is being done.
Vice Chair Ramula.
I just want to give one example. I completely agree that we need to continue to move forward with urgency. Really appreciate that we hear that. Really, I continue to agree that we need to fill these positions while not just defraying. I think, President Perez, your example shows new positions woven into the fabric is how we solve this. So I'm really excited about the updates today, and we want to continue to see the same urgency. We know that it's there. As one more example of this urgency that I don't know if everyone on this board knows of, we have heard about some of the things holding us back, changing federal laws, trying to integrate all of these pieces, funding, but something in a previous board meeting we had also heard about is just the availability of the people to fill this role. President Connolly heard us in a previous meeting, and I just wanted to give her a moment to share what Long Beach has done.
Yes, I know we're not the only one, but we have created now a certificate that would prepare people to be expert investigators. We're advertising it just now, it'll be launched this summer. We hope we've had great collaboration and input from the Chancellor's Office as well as experts on our campus, and we hope this will, you know, reduce that problem, and we're hoping that we'll find people who maybe come from organizations that can support them, but we've got it all organized now, so it'll be online really soon.
I just wanted to name, look, I know we're in a university and faculty personnel conversation, but what a great example of taking the call, feeling that urgency, using our PACE program to meet a very real need for both our system, and let's be clear, part of the reason it was so hard for us to hire is every time we did, other universities were just stealing them away.
A private industry.
Or a private industry. And so there is a massive need that we are now stepping into the void as the CSU. I'm so proud of the work that you've done and other universities have done, and this is but one small example of what felt like an intractable problem. These people These people don't exist. We then turned around and said, wait, we can actually do something about that. And so just really proud of the work we're doing on Title IX writ large, but wanted to call focus just to this one small example that I think is part of it.
Thank you so much for that, Vice Chair Ramula. Seeing that there are no other further comments or questions, I just want to say to interim Vice Chancellor Al Littico, it has been an honor and pleasure working with you. Thank you so much for the service that you have given to us. We really appreciate all the work and you have set a clear pathway for us. And I want to thank President Armstrong for sharing you with us. And I know that he is very anxious to have you return to your position there, but thank you so very much. So Chair Clark, this concludes the business of the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. Trustee Forstenberg, will you please convene the Committee on Organization and Rules?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Will the Committee on Organization and Rules please come to order? It is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda, which consists only of the approval of the minutes from the January 25 meeting. Are there any objections to the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. The committee has one information item on today's discussion agenda for a proposed Board of Trustees policy for the conferral of emeritus, emerita titles for trustees and system executives. The item will be presented by Michelle Kiss, Associate Vice Chancellor and Chief of Staff to the Board.
Thank you, Trustee Forstenberg. I am pleased to present this information item regarding a proposed policy for trustees' conferral for emeritus and emerita titles for trustees and system executives. This policy is the result of a comprehensive review and consultation process aimed at formalizing a longstanding board practice while ensuring consistency, transparency, and integrity in how the board recognizes and honors exceptional service within the CSU system. At the request of Board Chair Clark and Chancellor Garcia, this effort was undertaken not only to create a formal policy governing emeritus and emerita conferrals, but also as a part of the board's ongoing commitment to strengthen and clarify the board's policies and governance practices. By aligning this process with best practices in higher education governance, the board reinforces its commitment to institutional excellence and accountability. Historically, the CSU Board of Trustees has conferred emeritus and emerita titles on trustees and system executives in an ad hoc manner without a formal policy to guide eligibility or process. While this practice has been valuable in honoring distinguished service, it has resulted in some inconsistencies and a lack of transparency of a formal process. Following an internal audit of emerita conferrals and commendations from the past decade and in consultation with the Office of General Counsel, Systemwide Human Resources, Governance Expert, and Trustee Emerita Roberta Actenberg, it became evident that a codified policy was necessary. The proposed policy establishes clear eligibility criteria for both emeritus/emerita designation as noted in your agenda in Attachment A. For appointed trustees, including designated trustees, our student, faculty, and alumni eligible for the conferral upon completion of their appointed terms. Eligibility requires that trustees serve in good standing without reputational or ethical concerns. Trustees who may have to resign before completing their appointed term may be considered for emeritus or emerita status at the discretion of the board chair and chancellor. University presidents and system executives, including chancellor and vice chancellor, will be eligible upon retirement or resignation in good standing with a minimum of five years of service in their role unless an exception is granted by the board chair and chancellor in recognition of extraordinary contributions. This policy also includes conferrals of commendation for individuals who have provided exceptional service but do not meet the criteria for emeritus status. Importantly, this policy also aligns CSU with best practices found in similar higher education institutions, including the UC Board of Regents, Minnesota State Colleges and Universities, the State University of New York, and others. Additionally, it ensures that those granted emeritus and emerita status may continue to engage with the CSU community as honored advocates, advisors, and public representatives. The development of this proposed policy has been reviewed and vetted in consultation with both Trustee Forstenberg and Trustee Gilbert Laurius, Chair and Vice Chair of this committee, Chair Clark, and Chancellor Garcia, and also incorporates feedback from the board's senior governance advisor and system-wide subject matter experts. So this policy is presented today as an information item, and it will return to the board in May for action and approval. Thank you, Trustee Forstenberg, and I welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. And I want to thank the chair and the chancellor for asking for this overview. I think it's, I'm very much in favor of this and it's good to have it clarified so we understand what the structure should be. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts about it from the board? All right. That concludes the business of the Committee on Organization and Rules.
Thank you, Trustee Forstenberg. Now, yesterday, I suggested we take a break, and you guys said no. So I think we should learn from yesterday and we take a break.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take 10 minutes?
Yes.
We'll be back at, yes, 10:30.
Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the
We'll come back to order. Jack, you ready? Ready? Trustee McGory, will you please convene the Joint Committee on Finance and Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Will the meeting of the Joint Committees, how come I'm doing this and not Julia?
This happens to you.
Oh, my turn? Okay. Will the meetings of the Joint Committees on Finance, on Campus Planning, Buildings, and Grounds please come to order? It is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Does any committee member wish to remove anything, any item from the consent agenda for a separate discussion? And the consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes and California State University Northridge Matador Success and Inclusion Center schematic design and financing approval. Is there any member of the committee who would like to pull either of these two items? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved, and that concludes the business of the Joint Committee.
No?
No?
We have approval.
Oops. Gone. I know, I told Steve we had to make this short. That was a little too short. We have one discussion item.
I appreciate your efforts, though.
The funding, funding the California State University capital program. Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Ruelle.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee.
Okay, thank you, Trustee McGory. So, as the board clearly knows, that our need for capital to fund new projects and critical capital renewal to keep pace with the ever-changing educational needs of our students and faculty has been a key priority of this board for many, many years. Yet, because of the lack of resources, we continue to fall further and further behind in addressing these critical needs. In response to a request from our trustees, this presentation will look at CSU's capital funding challenges and where we might go from here. Now, as a point of clarification for this presentation, when we talk about the need for capital funding, we're talking about capital funding for academic projects, critical capital renewal, like deferred maintenance, and infrastructure. What we're not talking about is self-support projects such as housing, parking, student unions, and those types of facilities. Now, while capital funding for those types of facilities are very important, those projects by their very nature generally have a funding source available to them. It's built into the financing of those projects. Whereas with these projects that we're talking about this morning, the capital renewal and deferred maintenance in particular, and those infrastructure projects, they are at the heart of this funding problem and don't have that source built in. So here is the overall outline of the presentation. We're going to talk about our steps towards CSU's longstanding need to secure consistent, reliable funding sources to address our capital renewal needs. We have three goals for the presentation. First, we're going to provide some brief background on the history on how we got to this point and remind the board about the size of the capital funding challenge that we face, which, as you know, is pretty significant. Second, we'll share potential new sources of funding for capital, including the pros and cons of each of these options. While we'll continue to make use of existing sources of capital funding, the reality is that many of those existing sources are modest compared to our overall capital need. And we do need sources that make material impacts in reducing the critical capital backlog that we have. And then, third, and in response to the trustees' request, we hope that the background and information on funding ideas that you're going to hear foster a robust discussion among the trustees about the direction that we need to take to address this issue. From today's discussion and feedback, we will then refine an action plan involving and updating the board as appropriate. So with that, let me turn the presentation over to Assistant Vice Chancellor Robert Eaton. Robert?
Thank you, Steve. So in terms of background and how we got to this point, let me start with a brief history of capital funding at the California State University. For many years, state debt was the main source of capital for the CSU. The debt came in two forms: state general obligation bonds, approved by the voters of the state of California, and lease revenue bonds approved by the legislature. And this capital funding had been sizable. For example, from 2001 through 2008, approximately $2.8 billion was approved for the CSU, or put another way, about $330 million per year. However, much of that funding came from general obligation bonds. And the last voter-approved general obligation bond that provided funding for the California State University was in 2006. As such, between 2008 and 2014, and I'll note in a moment why 2014 is important, total capital funding from the state dropped significantly to about $440 million total over that period, or approximately $62 million per year. And that was mainly from lease revenue bonds. And keep in mind that the cost of construction during that timeframe was significantly lower than today. $330 million in 2008 would be about $600 million in today's dollars. So why is 2014 important? Well, that's when a big change took place. State legislation shifted responsibility for funding capital needs from the state to the CSU in that year. So along with the dearth of general obligation bond funding, which continues to this day, lease revenue bond funding ceased. And from that point forward, the CSU has had to utilize a patchwork of less certain funding sources to meet its capital needs. These funding sources include things like operating revenues to support the issuance of CSU's system-wide revenue bond debt, restructuring state lease revenue bond debt to free up resources for capital, one-time funds from the state, distribution of investment earnings from our total return portfolio, state appropriation occasionally to support the issuance of CSU's system-wide revenue bond debt, and for select projects, philanthropy has been a source of funding. All told, over the last 11 years, since responsibility for funding capital needs shifted to the CSU, we've had about $5.6 billion of capital funding from these various sources. However, it is important to note that 63% of that $5.6 billion, or about $3.5 billion, has come from state-associated resources unavailable on a recurring basis. So for example, the restructuring of state lease revenue bonds that we did back in 2016, as well as the periodic one-time funds from the state. So while these sources of funding have certainly been valuable, none of them, either individually or collectively, approached the magnitude of impact that state debt had many years ago in keeping up with the CSU's capital funding needs. And as a result, we have fallen woefully behind in addressing critical capital renewal. So let me turn the presentation over to Assistant Vice Chancellor Paul Gano to remind the board of the size and nature of that capital funding requirement.
Thank you, Robert. Well, the need in the capital program is immense. And in the current five-year plan, the universities have identified about $31 billion in projects. Roughly $5 billion of those projects are for the '25, '26, or this coming fiscal year. And of that $5 billion, about $1.4 billion is in deferred maintenance projects. The remaining $3.6 billion is for major capital improvement and infrastructure improvements. Those $3.6 billion includes whole building renovations, replacement buildings, and a little less than a billion in infrastructure improvement, so including things like utilities and building systems. The problem only gets larger if we fall short of addressing it. 31%, so 31% of our academic facilities, including almost 20% of our science buildings, are over 60 years old. And 52% of our building stock is over 50 years old. This means deferred maintenance is continually increasing, as you all know. And construction cost escalation means that if we don't address or replace a facility on time, the amount of funding need grows, even if the scope of the project remains unchanged. And for some projects, the cost of the project goes up even though the scope stays the same. The numbers from the previous slide are daunting, and as the CSU is in a situation that has been years in the making, this isn't something that we'll solve overnight. The solutions to address our capital needs should be manageable. In addition to the funding constraints we're facing, and even with a significant investment of funds, there's just a limit to the amount of work that each university can take on with their current project management staffing. And there's a limited number of projects that can happen concurrently on a campus, given space and scheduling constraints. Historically, funding levels, as you've seen in the previous slides and in the written materials, have been unpredictable. The CSU needs incremental and predictable funding. When funding levels aren't consistent and predictable, planning projects becomes difficult. While university planning staff can identify projects and work toward getting those projects shovel-ready, if there's funding uncertainty, many times those plans age out. Priorities shift, building codes can change, and if projects are delayed too long, we may have to resubmit for permits. To manage our program, we need a consistent funding plan over several years. To truly effectively address our needs, we need to be able to forecast and rely on a funding stream. One example of a way to address our capital needs and support our students, faculty, and staff would be to commit to a spending plan over the next 10 years. The CSU could target the $5 billion from the previous slide, which, to be clear, is the need identified in the '25, '26 fiscal year. This would include the highest priorities in large academic projects, deferred maintenance, and infrastructure need. To do this, roughly $550 million per year could be put toward the capital program each year for the next 10 years, which includes 1/10 of the $5 billion roughly, and additional funding to address increases due to escalation. This would be a reasonable number of projects for project staff at the universities to handle, with a portion directed to deferred renewal, a portion directed to renovations and replacement, and a portion directed to growth.
So if we wished to debt-finance this $550 million annual commitment for 10 years, we would need ongoing and increasing annual commitment of about $45 million per year each year. So for the first year, we would commit $45 million in operating revenue to support the debt service on $550 million in debt proceeds. Then in year two, we would commit another $45 million in operating revenue to support the debt service on another layer of $550 million in debt proceeds, and so on, for 10 years. So this chart shows in red the amount of capital funding that would be generated over that 10-year period, $5.5 billion, which includes the $5 billion target that Paul noted a moment ago, plus additional proceeds to keep pace with new deferred maintenance. And it also shows the growing commitment of operating funds in gray, resulting in at year 10, an annual commitment of $450 million to service debt over the life of the bonds. Now, at present, $440 million, or about 5.2% of our operating budget, is committed to debt service and capital funding for academic facilities. So at the end of the 10 years, without any increases in our overall budget, a plan of this kind would a little more than double the amount of our operating budget that would be committed to funding our facilities. So here we present three capital funding ideas for your consideration and discussion, which would provide sizable amounts of capital funding. So first, if we wish to mitigate the amount of our ongoing operating budget that might be committed to capital funding, we can once again pursue voter approval of a general obligation bond to finance capital. Now, as you know, higher education was in 2020's Proposition 13, which failed. But higher education was left out of last year's Proposition 2, which passed. We were greatly disappointed that the legislature chose not to include higher education in last year's bond. However, as Trustee McGory noted yesterday, State Assembly Member David Alvarez, who chairs the Assembly Budget Subcommittee, has introduced a higher education bond for the 2026 ballot and has expressed clear interest in working toward a higher education general obligation bond. So general obligation bond funding, anywhere from $1 to $4 billion, would have a significant impact on our capital funding needs. And so the CSU will continue to work with Assembly Member Alvarez and possibly the University of California in getting a bond measure on the ballot, while also considering other alternatives. Now, in the absence of general obligation bond funding, we would need to identify new dedicated sources of operating revenue to support the levels of debt issuance I described on the previous slide. One idea is a dedicated amount of ongoing state appropriation to support issuance of debt under the CSU's system-wide revenue bond program. This resource would be similar to the old lease revenue bond structure, with the difference being that the CSU issues the debt rather than the state. This could be planned with $45 million incremental increases each year for 10 years, generating the $450 million in new revenue that could support the $5.5 billion in capital funds. Of course, this could be a tough sell in Sacramento, given the state's current budget situation. Another idea to address capital facility funding would be a dedicated revenue source in the form of a capital facility student fee. This is a challenging option also, especially considering the approval in 2023 of student tuition increases for the system. But as an example, an annual fee of about $100 per student would generate the $45 million needed to support one year's worth of the capital funding target of $550 million per year. Again, none of these ideas would be easy to put in place. However, they all would have sizable impacts on the issue, and all three could be pursued simultaneously. So let me turn the presentation back over to Executive Vice Chancellor Relia for closing thoughts.
Thanks, Robert, and thank you, Paul. So the bottom line is that, you know, for too long, due to inadequate funding, and despite the best efforts of our university presidents and their teams, the CSU's capital funding problem has continued to grow. We can no longer simply cobble together inadequate resources here and there and hope to eventually solve the issue. What we need are sizable, regular capital funding sources. And the need is so great that it'll take an ongoing investment from the state, the California State University, and our students. With respect to the three ideas that Robert just outlined, our plan, subject, of course, to the board input, would be to begin pursuing general obligation bond funding by working to place a bond measure on the 2026 ballot. As Trustee McGory mentioned yesterday, we think this is the right time to do that. And at the same time, we'd also begin work on petitioning the state on a plan to provide the CSU with additional ongoing appropriation that's dedicated to supporting CSU debt issuance on these critical projects. Now, as Robert said, given the state's current budget situation, we would not expect to secure this additional appropriation in the immediate future. But by starting now, we can lay the groundwork for success once the state's economy starts improving. And under the premise that all funding sources are needed, the state, the CSU, and potentially our students, we would evaluate the feasibility of a capital facility's student fee. Now, one bright spot on this kind of dismal picture is the relatively new generation of capital funding from CSU's recent change in its investment authority. This new source has generated over $300 million for critical capital projects over the last few years, and hit its highest point this past year with over $95 million going to campuses for critical capital projects, just from that source. And my sincere thanks to Trustee McGory, to Robert and his team, and our outstanding investment advisory committee that's guided this important stream of revenue over the last few years. So today's presentation was designed to present some ideas that could make bold, meaningful progress in addressing our capital needs and spur some discussion by the board on these ideas. We look forward to addressing your questions, hearing any thoughts that you have going forward. And Trustee McGory, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Robert. There are a couple, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on this. On the first one, in terms of alternative revenue sources, the only way this would work would be to enter into, hate to say it, another compact. And that compact process has the credibility of, you know, it doesn't have any credibility.
Right.
Obviously, this time, we'd have to do it, I think, with the Assembly and Senate leadership, along with the governor's office, because that process last time kind of backfired on us.
Yeah.
And it hasn't held up. And maybe the integrity of that compact would be stronger by having all three entities supporting it with us and do $45 million a year, you know, increasing. That's not that big a hit in the budget. It seems, but we'd have to believe it, because you're going to issue bonds on this. And, you know, so far, we haven't had reliable agreements up there. So this would really have to stick in Sacramento. That's one idea, is some kind of a compact with the three entities. On the general obligation bond funding, as you said, Robert, we haven't had a bond on the ballot since 2006, which is absolutely ridiculous. And every time we go into the process, K through 12 hoodwinked us, and they take all the money. And yet, they have the ability to issue their own bonds. And in fact, since they got the bond authority lowered from 66.23% to 55%, they've issued $22 billion worth of bonds across the state. Just in San Diego, there were 12 bonds approved by school districts last election. We don't have that flexibility, and yet we can't get- They jam us every time we try to get a bond approved, because K through 12 comes in and takes the money, and we end up zeroed out again. It's the issue in UC. I think David Alvarez is on to something. You know, we had support in the Senate. Senator Glaser led the charge on this and had good broad support in the Senate. We didn't get anywhere with the Assembly. And now we have at least Assembly Member Alvarez leading the charge on this. And that bond that he is sponsoring in terms of legislation, although it doesn't have an amount in it, at least it only addresses CSU and UC. And we've got to identify the opposition on this again. And yesterday, I talked about the BIA, which I wasn't aware of. We need to identify the opposition, sit down with them, figure this thing out, and move this thing forward. We can't continue, if it's 2026, it's 20 years since we've had a bond. And these bonds are only $4 or $5 billion. Our need in the capital improvement program for five years is $31 billion? Right, Robert? And how much of that is actually, do we have identified funding sources?
Well, that's why we're having the presentation. Is it present? We really don't. We have some residual monies, but that's the whole idea.
Maybe a billion dollars we'll come up with against the 31?
Even that, because we always have to have a revenue source if we're going to issue debt. And that's what we lack right now because of other budget priorities. And, you know, the board has been put in the position that they have to make those kinds of choices. And we've not been in a position where we can dedicate a revenue source to the issuance of debt. The last time we had one dedicated on a sizable amount was in 2018. And that was a result of restructuring the state lease revenue bonds by kicking out some of the- some of the debt out in the future and freeing up cash flow in the present. And so over the course of a couple of years, we did a little over $2 billion worth of debt for capital projects. That was very meaningful and sizable, but we don't have that available to us right now.
Well, we need to develop a good messaging strategy in terms of supporting Assemblymember Alvarez and Senator Glaser that really shows the need we have. Pictures of the buildings, I mean, I've been on the campuses with buildings that are literally falling apart or have been essentially condemned. I mean, we're not in a good situation with our capital infrastructure. The third one, I've got a real problem with. I mean, we led the charge here for tuition increase, and it was painful. We didn't like it. It was a tough thing to do. And I'll tell you, if I was a student or a parent, I would really be concerned about what's happened here in the last few years. We got this tuition increase approved. And so we get it approved, the students are now paying 5% more each year in tuition, and yet the state turns around and cuts the budget. And so on the campus, what's happening, but you're a student, yeah, I'm paying $100 million more in tuition across the system, and yet courses are being cut, faculty and staff are being laid off. What the hell's going on here? I mean, you increased my tuition, and yet the quality of my education is being diminished in front of me because the state's not picking up their fair share of the load. And so I just have a real problem looking at the students again for some kind of a fee increase. They're already doing it. Many of the campuses have fees that are in excess of $2,000, $3,000. And the students voted for it. They voted for it to improve either a success fee for hiring more faculty or basically a facility fee to build more facilities. I just, I'd have a hard time with this one. Until we see some corresponding commitment by the state legislature and the governor to funding what we need, I would hate to put the load again back on the students. I just don't think, in terms of equity, this is a realistic alternative now, probably in the next two or three years. So those are my comments on this. I think we really need to go after the general obligation bond.
I noticed you were looking at me when you were talking about the budget cuts. It hasn't happened yet, so I just want to remind everyone that visits to legislators and weighing in exactly as you said, Trustee McGory, of how important it is to show students when this body raised tuition that they are actually going to not see a reduction in the quality of the operations. But I'm a former builder, and I want to weigh in a little bit on this as well, especially because, I don't know if you all have seen, there's been a lot of attention paid to Ezra Klein's analysis of what we are doing wrong in California, this book Abundance that's just come out. And as someone who spent 18 years in construction, I've seen this firsthand. And so I just want to recognize that costs are going up. They're going up for a variety of reasons, but not least of which, if we just look right in this moment, labor availability is getting more and more difficult, particularly with the ads that the federal government is running telling undocumented people to leave. And we know that a significant percentage of the California labor force is undocumented, and Californians are very supportive of pathways to citizenship for these folks, but the federal government has a very different plan. And by the way, the fires in LA are also going to demand quite a bit of the labor force that is here for construction, which is only going to make it more difficult with scarcity to find people to be able to actually build and repair and refurbish some of these spaces. I often say, money doesn't build things, people build things. And we have a big challenge when it comes to the labor force. Interest rates are high, higher than they certainly have been over the last period of time. We also now have enormous uncertainty when it comes to tariffs and the costs of steel and aluminum. And let's face it, we're not building the kinds of things that are going to fill these buildings. And the building materials are not being manufactured here. And with the Trump administration looking at 25% minimum of tariffs, that's going to add to the costs of construction. We are also looking at a time of great uncertainty, where the federal government is threatening major, major cuts to, or withdrawal and pulling back, which they've already done when it comes to NIH funding. We are vulnerable to the potential decrease in federal funding that is arbitrarily and frankly maliciously being targeted toward California, but toward higher education and intellectualism in general. And then finally, we know that we do suffer from a popular lack of popularity for this. I was out pounding the pavement in 2020 or 2022. Now, I can't remember when it was on the ballot. I think it was, might have been '22. Unfortunately, they called the initiative Proposition 13, which really hurt us, but nevertheless, most California voters are not immediately impacted by this. And so that makes this a big challenge. And so what I would say, because I never raise problems without proposing, oh, one more problem, if I may, which is that we're looking at enrollment challenges in certain campuses. And I was on Cal State East Bay campus last week. They have decommissioned one of the buildings there just because they don't have the funds to be able to continue to keep it open and operational. A building that is not challenged with the need, you know, with the need for seismic upgrades or various other things. It's a perfectly usable building, but it is being decommissioned because the funding is not there to be able to keep the lights on. And because of a reduction in student population, the need for the building isn't there. So all that to say that this vision, while justifiable, is not particularly feasible, in my opinion. But what is feasible is an approach that is more targeted to assess which buildings and where, system-wide, right? Not just each campus saying, these are our buildings that need refurbishment, repairs, seismic upgrades, but system-wide, what are our priority buildings? And how do we, if we can engage in such a process, fix the buildings that are in most dire need? And to me, that means campuses that have pressure on enrollment, which is what we want, a good thing, and that we can, on a cost-benefit analysis, be able to expand the footprint of our facilities or preserve the footprint of our facilities in order to be able to serve those students on campuses where, you know, as we know, we just have significantly impacted demand on classrooms and labs and other things. So I would suggest that we think about it in those terms. I think we're going to get through this period, but in the short term, let's find and prioritize those buildings that we really need to find the funding to be able to fix. And let's look at the per-square-foot cost of being able to refurbish those buildings and go about it that way.
Thank you. I think, Paul, I think we have some of that information in terms of priorities and categories of capital improvements, and we can provide that to the board.
We do.
Right, Paul?
We do. We sure do. We can do that.
I think the challenge is finding some revenue source that's sustainable. And that's, I think that's the problem we've been grappling with. I know Trustee Adamson and I had a conversation that he raised with me that will be in the Finance Committee, and there is lottery money. And it keeps coming in. And there's $113 million carry forward in that fund, and about $80 million that comes in per year. Maybe we should be looking at that as a source of, for capital improvements. Maybe we don't want to reline it because it's volatile in terms of the economy. You don't want to necessarily put that in the general fund, but you could do, we could do capital improvements from that. And maybe that's a source of funding we ought to study as a possibility. I know I talked to Steve about it, and there's projects that are being funded on an ongoing basis, but I'm looking at the projects, and I'm going, is this more important than having people in safe buildings accommodating growth and enrollment, you know, having buildings on our campus that we should be proud of and not embarrassed by in terms of a lot of the campuses?
Certainly, Trustee McGory, but if we do not break down the per-square-foot cost of construction, we're never going to get there because the curve is so steep now. As we see the components that drive the cost of construction going up, in some ways unpredictably high, we have to figure out how to break that down as well. Because even if we look to, say, philanthropy or to lottery money, any fund, any resource where we might be able to bring in funds, if we can't show the feasibility of construction at rates that make sense, it won't matter that we can find a funding source if the per-square-foot cost is so, you know, stratospheric that these projects are simply just not feasible. And that is frankly why I go to Ezra Klein, because he takes apart high-speed rail. And just in general, the components that go into the cost of design, engineering, and construction that have gotten out of control in the state.
Thank you. Trustee Lopez.
Thank you. This is a really important topic. First of all, on the lottery money, it is specifically prohibited in law to use it for construction and infrastructure. So that's not the issue. But I think there's a more fundamental issue here that I just want to just say a few words about. One is, we have been really, really good about getting the value proposition of the CSU up and in front of everybody. And we're focused on the $375 million because that's the most pressing problem we face right now. But we need to also say that it's not just the $375 million. It is literally the entire CSU and the campus and the classrooms and the, this infrastructure, when they transferred it back to us in '14, essentially, the state backed off its responsibility for these public buildings. And they basically said to CSU, you guys figure it out, and you guys figure out where you get the money to do it. We need to come back to that conversation. There is a fundamental public responsibility for these buildings. And I agree totally with you, Jack, that we should not go to the students for the basic core infrastructure of our institutions. I mean, if they want to vote for, and they have, for activity centers or other things that benefit them directly, but these are core buildings for us to fulfill and deliver on our mission. So we have to begin to really reframe the conversation. Yes, immediately, let's support the bond issue. That's the tool we have in front of us. We have got to go back and talk about the core funding principles of having this public institution that is so critical and so fundamental to the future of California. And that includes infrastructure. And if we start parsing it out, cut by cut, we will always be on the defensive because the money's never there, because the costs are continuing to rise, all of those things. It's got to become an argument that says, these go hand in hand. The 375 is cutting all the pain we're going through with people. But you know what? It's also meaning that our buildings are getting worse, that we're going to have to close more, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we don't do that in a thorough way. So I would just say, I want to go back to first principles here as well. And for me, I'm not going back to the students on this. Just, and I was very big, and I, as you know, led on the tuition increase because I thought that was right. We have a private and a benefit and a public benefit, and it's a shared benefit. We're still the most affordable institution in the nation, really. Seven out of 10 of our students don't pay tuition. We've done everything we can to just make the cost of attendance, you know, to help our students. But on this, I don't see any rationale for ever going to our students on the basic infrastructure needs of the institution. If we can't provide that, we're not doing our job.
Yeah, I'm a no vote on that one, too. But Greg, you know, we need, I think when we message, the legislature's focused on us increasing enrollment, and we need to be. We need to produce more college graduates to fund, to fuel and reinvest in the economy. We know that. I think when we message that, though, with the legislature, what we should be saying is, that's fine, but you got to have a place to put them.
That's it.
There ought to be, we ought to link the increase in enrollment with facilities, because otherwise, you're not going to be able, I mean, you just don't have the classroom space on a lot of the campuses. I know, I'm out of San Diego State, the classrooms are full. And when I taught out there, I could only take a limited number of crashers because the classroom was full. And we need to focus, I think, on, if you increase enrollment by 1%, you need X dollars for facilities. And those two ought to be completely linked together so that at least they know we need that money. Next is Diego.
And I'll try and be quick, because I completely agree with what you were saying, Julia. This is not a nice thing that the state is doing. It is critical to the students we serve on behalf of the state. And so I think one way we could do this is literally just to do an analysis. We continue to say things like, well, without this money, here's what happens. And at some point, you know, we kept hearing a couple of years back, Jane, about some buildings that didn't have air conditioning. Could we just make a decision that's like, if we don't have air conditioning, that is not a habitable building in which to educate nor to ask teachers, faculty to teach? Sure, we could. And we don't at the moment because we know we have enough deferred maintenance that we aren't able to get ahead of. And so we are plugging every hole we can and making really tough choices about when do we build new buildings in places that have pressure for new enrollment? When do we do deferred maintenance on buildings for which we need critical deferred maintenance? And the answer is both. And so if the number we need is 45 million a year to get the debt obligation to truly meet all of these needs, great. But we need to say, if we're serving 461,000 students this year, and we expect to serve 465,000 next year, that means 4,000 new seats, plus these deferred maintenance pieces, which equals this amount of debt obligation, which means this amount of ongoing, and we cannot commit to increases without that equal commitment to this funding? Whole thought one. Second, I know buried in the report, and I really liked it, and then I have one last thought, was the idea that new buildings should come aside, come with a set aside for deferred maintenance. If we're not able to get deferred maintenance as part of the going back to basics with the state, then that is something that in new buildings, we should be putting, when we put in a new building, we should just say, and the cost of this new building includes this set aside for what will inevitably be deferred maintenance on this building. Second thought. The last one, I agree with the Lieutenant Governor on the rising cost of housing. Abundance is next up on my reading list. I'm really excited about it. And I wonder whether, there are pieces of this out of our control, clearly. I wonder whether, as a board, we should at some point take a look at capping the amount we spend on price per square foot. There are always going to be moments where a particular building, for a particular reason, exceeds. But I do think we also have some role to play in, and this is not my area of expertise, so, you know, I don't have 18 years in construction. so, you know, I don't have 18 years in construction. I have zero days in construction, so bear with me through this thought. But I would love for us just to consider, do we have a role to play in saying, if it's above this number, like, if it falls within this number, great, that is exactly where we're directing, and does that allow our facilities team to essentially negotiate harder? Because we, as a board, have just said, we don't pay above this amount in price per square foot. So I don't know what's possible in there, but would love for us just to come back to this question of what is a price per square foot cap?
We looked at this trustee Adamson, and I spent a lot of time on a task force, excuse me, looking at this, and it's complicated. These educational buildings, Lieutenant Governor, you and I used to private sector stuff, and you know, you're going to calculate an income versus a cost and get a return on investment. And it's just been very difficult to do that. One thing I think we're leaning towards is, and we need to have a conversation with the presidents on this, is I would like to get a, what is a reasonable cost per square foot on these buildings? And they are higher than the ones that we're used to because of common space and wet labs, and I've heard every single story about these buildings that you can come up with. But to come up with what is a reasonable cost for each type of building, and then tell the campus, tell the goddamn architects to design to it. The problem I have with the process is, we hire the architects, the architects get with the faculty, and before you know it, we get bells and whistles that we've never heard of before, and the price just goes up. What I think we need to do is come up with what is the cost per square foot, and Paul's working on this, in each category of building, and then say, you're going to design to this. And if you can't design to it, you're not going to be our architect. And architects don't like to hear that. I mean, that's just not part of their pizzazz. They like to just design. But at some point in time, we need to get to that point.
That's the idea.
Yeah, but, okay.
As yesterday, this conversation on the part of the trustees just gives me, I'm so proud to be on this board. And the points that are being made, first of all, I agree, the students should not have to pay for this. Then the question is, what can we do? And I do have a comment, chancellor. What I want is this board to be informed enough to support you and your staff to be able to solve these problems. So I'm going to ask this as delicately as I can. In my time on the board, I've actually seen Jack McGory ask the office of the chancellor's staff a question. And literally, the question is just not answered. The question just hangs out there. A comment of my observation about the members of this board. The appointed members of this board were from all over California. And each one of us, I think, in some form or fashion in our careers, solved problems. And one of the challenges for the board is, when you put 20 people who solve problems, and you put a problem in front of it, the 20 people are going to try and solve the problem. And you can see that we're reading these materials. And so when we get information and we see a problem, or we hear about a problem like we heard yesterday, there are going to be trustees who are going to try and look through here and solve problems. We're supposed to be policymakers. We're not supposed to be problem solvers. The conversation here helps inform you and your staff in terms of ways that you might be able to approach it. But when we get materials, I would ask respectfully that the goal be to anticipate our questions. For example, the conversation about the lottery funds. Well, fortunately, we have trustees, or more than one trustee, one in particular, trustee Lopez, who is quite expert in the area of finance and can say, well, you can't use lottery funds for that. So that tells us one of the things that we're constrained by, that the chancellor's office is constrained by. But I note here, we're going to be talking about the lottery funds in just a few minutes. But in the background, it says, "The Lottery Act allows for expenditure of lottery receipts for public education. The CSU's guidelines ensure that the lottery funds are used to support instruction or instruction-related purposes. Each year, the board of trustees adopts a system-wide lottery budget that adheres to CSU guidelines and Lottery Act provisions." It would be helpful, as we're preparing, if we came in having read these materials, if we knew what those guidelines and the Lottery Act provisions are. And that helps focus our conversation. So I really appreciate this conversation by the board, and I hear some very good suggestions that I hope, I know we're being recorded, I hope to get a report back in a future meeting concerning some of the suggestions that the trustees are making. That way, we're ensuring that the office of the chancellor is engaged, not just ignoring our conversation, but interacting with us to actually try to solve the problem so that we can do it and support on a policy level, and not on an operations level. So again, I'm going to keep saying it because I really mean it, it's such an honor to be on this board with you all.
Thank you, Chairman Clark. Trustee Gilbert Larue.
Thank you. I wish I had, I wish I had great solutions, but I have thoughts. I have modest thoughts. One is, you know, this does remind me a little bit of the situation our state is in, and certainly Los Angeles, when we delayed infrastructure repair on our electrical and our water, and then we have a disaster, and the cost is so much higher than if we had just done what we needed to do all along. And I think what we're doing is trying to make sure that the Cal State University system doesn't end up in any kind of disastrous situation. This is my, this is to the lieutenant governor, whom I deeply respect. It's a message, though, to, you know, we are the state's university, and as the CSU goes, our state goes. So we have decommissioned buildings on all of our campuses, not because they're shiny and new and sitting there with bows on it and we don't have students. Most of them, you would not even want to walk in. Sometimes I feel like I have to wash my hands when I, you know, just walk into it. And what we are, and we hear about asbestos, we hear about tiles falling down from the ceiling. And yet, what we're trying to do, especially on the campuses that are under, that are depopulating, we're trying to make return on investment propositions. It is hard to convince students who are on the fence about going to university and whether this is a good proposition, to be uncomfortable in college, to sit in buildings that are not air-conditioned, to watch tiles fall down. That is a hard return on investment proposition to make. And so I think we really have to talk, to think about what does equity mean? We know who our students are. They are the ones who are the first in their family to go to college. They are the ones who are breaking cycles of poverty. We need them in school for the well-being and the future of our state. None of us want to be legislators or leaders in a state that has students not going to college. And so we need to take care of our universities. Now, we can't just look at each other, we certainly can't look at the students to do it. But, you know, what I would say, the same way with electrical infrastructure and the kind of infrastructure we need in our cities, is if we fix it now, we are good for 50 years with the buildings that we fix. This is not like a recurring annual problem. So we're trying to get ahead and look at funding so that, you know, we can keep up a little bit of a time and stay on top of this, get ahead of a, get ahead of a problem. And, you know, what I would say, just on the student funding, $100 a student front, we lose more when students don't come to the university than we gain with the $100 tuition. So we need to keep our students here with the knowledge that they are being treated fairly and that we're not putting the price that should be on all of our backs and the state's back on these students. And I do want to say, I think we do prioritize, system-wide, the buildings that we want to repair. This is a pretty honed list. This is not a wish list of, you know, this is not a fantasy list. This is a list of buildings in pretty devastated condition and buildings that we absolutely feel we need to build to grow our university the way we need to grow it. So, you know, and I just look at it like, this is, this is our problem, but this is the state's problem. And if we can solve this problem by finding the funding, we are literally solving the state's problem. So we're in this together, and I think we have to look at the solve together, or we're really going to have a very inequitable system in this country with fancy, high-level universities and really crummy university for the students of our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor.
Trustee Larue, let me just very briefly respond. I was visiting campuses as we were trying to build support and make the argument for the need for the proposition that would have brought much-needed funds for repair. And I didn't just hear about ceilings falling down, I saw them. I went into these facilities, and it is abysmal. So please do not mistake anything that I am saying as questioning the need. What I'm trying to do is breathe a dose of reality here, which is that we have to approach this problem from multiple angles. Just the angle of looking for funds is not sufficient because those funds are simply not going to come anywhere near solving the problem if we don't figure out how to approach it from other angles. And when you see a building in such disrepair with, you know, bathrooms that haven't been touched in 60 years, and then you see that the only solution is $2,000 the square foot to repair everything, and bells and whistles and gold plating and, you know, world-renowned architects, that to me is a problem as well, and one that is only now exacerbated by all of the things that I just mentioned. So finding efficiencies is absolutely essential. And prioritizing not just, certainly, I do not question for one moment that everything on the list isn't dire, but by prioritizing them, we can at least go from nothing to something as we can start to find ways to prioritize the funds that we do have, even some of the funds we have in reserve, to be able to just start to tick these things off. And by the way, finding partners in philanthropy and in potentially scaling back what we might do to make them functional. I think we have to think of it simply from multiple angles, not just the where's the money going to come from angle.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other, I don't see any other?
Student trustee.
Student trustee. Oh, okay.
Thank you. And so I do want to thank my fellow trustees for the desire not to rely on students for these recurring costs. It makes me very proud to serve alongside you, knowing that these are upheld by our trustees. And so leaning on our lieutenant governor's remarks of never raising problems without propositions, and this will be one of my very few longer comments, so I want to acknowledge that this is an information item first, and I want to reiterate that ensuring safe and healthy buildings is essential. However, as fiduciaries, our priority should be identifying and implementing solutions that do not add further financial strain on our students. As we mentioned, many of who are still feeling the impacts of our most recent and ongoing tuition increase, along with rising campus fees across CSU. So I'd like to know and ask if, how we've approached this with our philanthropic friends? I know that we have mentioned that our donors are typically less interested in capital projects. However, have we ever made it a priority and requirement to ask these requests with each of our donors? Because a modest request through each of these conversations goes a long way. It costs almost nothing to ask, but it means everything to our students. And we must uphold these same requests and standards amongst our donors before and after we request them from our students. And we should do so proudly because we're the CSU, we provide so much more for our students. And I want to reiterate the support for assessing the buildings that need it most, and because my nursing background jumps to triaging, and I am in full support of reviewing a system-wide assessment of capital needs and establishing a cap on square footage for buildings that are essential and not cosmetic.
Thank you, trustee Juarez. I think there's no doubt, I think there's a consensus here that we need to do more in philanthropy. And buildings is a great category. People can get their name on the building, and as long as they put a good chunk of money in. And I think that's an effort across the system right now. And I know it's worked very well at the universities I've been involved in. And so that's a big part of fundraising and philanthropy, and I think that's a great recommendation. Are there any other comments? Okay, that concludes the meeting of the Joint Committee on Finance and Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds, and we have a really quick one coming up on the Committee on Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds by itself. Want me to move forward, Chairman?
Please do so. Thank you. And then I'll call on trustee Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman Clark. Will the meeting of the Committee on Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds please come to order? It is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Does any committee member wish to remove an item for separate discussion? There are three items, approval of minutes, San Jose Track Project and California State University of Bakersfield Energy Innovation Building Schematic Design Approval. Does anybody wish to pull an item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda? Is it? So moved.
Moved.
Okay, second? Okay, are there any questions, any comments from the board on the motion on the floor? Hearing no further comments or questions, we will now vote on the consent agenda. Can we do that on our own? Voice? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? The items listed are approved. Chair Clark, this concludes the business of the Committee on Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you, trustee McGory. Well done. Trustee Lopez, will you please convene the Committee on Finance?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Will the meeting of the Committee on Finance please come to order? Before we consider the consent agenda, I am going to exercise a chair prerogative and pull the item on the lottery and defer it for another meeting. I think I've, there's been enough questions on the lottery budget. I've talked, I've conferred with staff, it would be okay to bring it back in May. And I think it deserves a hearing, and I'm not sure that we would be doing that justice if we just answered individual questions right now. I think there are bigger issues involved here. So if we can just defer the lottery item till May, then I would like to consider the consent agenda, which now is three items, the action item of approving the minutes, the annual debt report, information report, and the quarterly investment report. May I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any objections?
No, I just wanted to make one comment on the investment report. The Investment Advisory Council has done a great job. Steve Relia has been spearheading that along with Scott August. And if you look at the one-year return on the total return portfolio, 22.76 percent. I just wish my investments were making that.
Great, great.
I'd also like to say, Madam Chair, thank you for pulling the lottery off. I do think it is worth further discussion as we move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm glad we're, I'm glad you're, we're doing the commendations this quarter and not next quarter. Anyway, are there any objections then to the consent agenda? If not, I say the consent agenda has been approved. And with that, if there are no further comments or questions, that concludes the business of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Yes?
Nope.
I think we're, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, thank you, trustee Lopez. Then, thank you, Trustee Lopez. And with that, at this time, will the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the California State University please come to order? Ms. Coral, please call the roll.
Trustee Adamson.
Still here.
Vice Chair Rambula.
Here.
Trustee Braar. Chair Clark.
Present.
Trustee Fagan.
Here.
Trustee Firstenberg.
Here.
Trustee Fong.
Here.
Chancellor Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Gilarducci.
Here.
Trustee Gilbert Lory.
Here.
Trustee Wajardo.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Here.
Trustee McGory. Trustee Molina Mansio.
Here.
Trustee Nezhebat.
Here.
Governor Newsom. Trustee Rodriguez. Speaker Rivas. Trustee Steinhouser.
Here.
Superintendent Thurman. Trustee Vargas. Trustee Y Melikar.
Here.
Chair Clark, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Coral. Before we proceed with today's consent agenda, I'd like all of us to enjoy our second video from San Diego State, highlighting the immersive experiences that literally leave our students on top of the world. Would you please roll the video?
The goal of my team going to the Arctic is overall to look at greenhouse gas exchange across the tundra. This summer, we got to access more sites via helicopter, and so we were traveling around 50 miles south of the Ute Kiawakwic area and accessing sites from there.
It's very difficult accessing your sites in the tundra with all of your equipment, so I was really excited that I could have the support of going to different areas that had not really been visited before.
It's just an amazing ecosystem, and it's just so different from what we are used to. There is no development for hundreds of miles. The students are really important for this research because they bring a fresh perspective that makes this research always new and always transformative.
My connection deepens to nature, and it also deepens to humanity in that sense. Even though we are going to very desolate places, it gives me this understanding that, like, we're all part of a bigger picture.
Interaction with the native community, it's really important because we really need to be able to understand what's affecting them and also be respectful of their traditions and also the areas that are sacred to them.
Very important that we work together with local communities and collaborate with local communities in any type of research environment.
We are coming into their land to do our work, and so we want to first respect them and how can we make sure we're minimizing the effect that we have on things that might affect the community.
I hope that the impact of our research findings that we're doing here is that, most importantly, to protect ecosystems, but also just gain more understanding and appreciation for the ecosystem, especially the Arctic.
I think there's potential for it to enhance what we know about these common landforms in this region and hopefully help Arctic research as the landscape continues to change.
Thank you to the team at San Diego State for sharing the adventurous Aztec spirit with all of us and for highlighting not only the global reach of the CSU's research endeavors, perhaps more importantly, the global connection this research inspires in our students and future leaders. That was excellent. And with that, it's now time for the board to consider today's consent agenda. All items requiring full board approval are listed on the consent agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove any items from the agenda? God bless you. May I have a motion to approve the items? Got it? And may I have a second? Any discussion? Ms. Coral, would you please call the roll?
I believe we don't need a roll call vote for this one, right?
Then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? It is done. Now, we're almost done, but we're going to confer emerita status to some of our colleagues. It's well deserved. But in order to make sure everyone is comfortable in their seats during this, because it's very important, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to finish after that.
At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as.
So, this is a real pleasure. I'm going to introduce each conferral, invite Chancellor Garcia to say a few words, God bless you, call for a motion to approve the action, and then I invite our honorees to provide some brief remarks. Our first action item is the conferral of the title of trustee emerita on Anna Ortiz-Morphy. She could not join us today in person, but has provided some prerecorded remarks we will share in a moment. Trustee Ortiz-Morphy, I hope you're watching live stream. While your time with us was relatively brief, your influence and perspectives were invaluable in the boards, to the board's discussion and the challenging decisions like the ones we've been making during this session. Your calm demeanor, your good humor, and insightful comments were also welcome, always welcome and appreciated. And I'm sure they will remain a gift to many organizations you will support in years to come. Chancellor Garcia, would you please make a few comments?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Trustee Anna Ortiz-Morphy graciously and courageously accepted her appointment to the CSU Board of Trustees in the midst of a global pandemic. And while the pandemic ultimately subsided, there were plenty of other momentous events, some foreseen, others not, to make her tenure on this board both challenging, and I trust, I trust deeply rewarding. Trustee Ortiz-Morphy brought to this board a valuable combination of keen financial acumen, a compassionate heart for our students' well-being, and well-being and also success for our students, and a deep commitment to expanding access to higher education. A combination that served her well in her contributions to the work on the committees on finance, audit, campus planning, buildings and grounds, and institutional advancement, among others. We are also so grateful for her wise counsel during the searches for the presidents of San Jose State and Cal Poly Humboldt. I extend my sincere gratitude and deep appreciation for trustee Ortiz-Morphy's tenure on the board over the past five years. I wish you, trustee Ortiz-Morphy, the very best as you go forward in your journey, always keeping the CSU and our students in your heart. Chair Clark?
Thank you, Chancellor. The conferral of the title of trustee emerita on Anna Ortiz-Morphy is an action item before the board. May I please have a motion?
No move.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, no opposed? No abstention? It is done. It is approved. Please roll the video of trustee Ortiz-Morphy.
Chancellor Garcia, Chair Clark, fellow trustees, esteemed presidents, faculty, administrators, and most importantly, the students who are at the heart of the California State University system. It is with deep gratitude that I stand before you today to mark the conclusion of my term as a trustee. Serving as a CSU trustee has been one of the greatest privileges of my life. Each meeting, each discussion, each campus visit has reinforced my belief in the power of public higher education. I have been inspired by the dedication of our faculty, the tireless commitment of our administrators, and most of all, the resilience and brilliance of our students. Their passion for learning and their determination to create better futures for themselves and their communities is what makes the CSU system so extraordinary. As a first-generation college student, I know firsthand the profound impact of education. My grandmother always told me, no one can take away your education from you. That simple but powerful truth has guided me throughout my life, and it is why I have been so deeply committed to ensuring the CSU remains a place of access, opportunity, and transformation for all students, regardless of their background. I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Lieutenant Governor Eleni Kounalakis for her mentorship and support. Additionally, I want to express my sincere thanks to Governor Gavin Newsom for appointing me to this position. His trust and confidence in me have allowed me to contribute to this incredible institution, and I am honored to have served in this capacity. Though my term is ending, my commitment to CSU is lifelong. I will always be an advocate, a supporter, and a believer in the transformative work happening on each of our campuses. The CSU is a beacon of opportunity, and I have no doubt that its impact will only continue to grow in the years ahead. To my fellow trustees, thank you for your leadership and collaboration. To Chancellor Garcia and the entire CSU team, thank you for your vision and dedication. And to the students, past, present, and future, thank you for reminding us why this work matters. I may be stepping away from this role, but I will always be a part of this incredible CSU family. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, trustee emerita Ortiz-Morphy. And again, we wish you much success in your future endeavors, and we know you're always going to be a champion for the CSU. Our next action item is the conferral of title trustee emerita on Lillian Kimbell. Trustee Kimbell, I, last night I said some things. Trustee Kimbell, I, last night I said some things and I misstated. I said you were a hero. I should have said, "You're a superhero" to me. I count myself as immensely fortunate to have followed in your footsteps and those who are friend when to fong to be the chair of this board. With your gavel in hand, you presented a masterclass on guiding us through the most difficult times this institute, institution ever saw. You focused our discussions. You held us together. It was difficult. You've been a model of compassionate, strong leadership, and I thank you personally for setting a high standard for all of us, and I will do my very best to meet your standard. Chancellor?
Trustee Lillian Kimbell began her service on this board in 2014 when I was president of Cal State Fullerton. So I had the opportunity and the honor to witness her service to the CSU for many years. The issues and policies that have come before this board have varied over time, but trustee Kimbell has remained constant in her consistently professional approach to her work in the respect she invariably showed her colleagues, presidents, faculty, staff, students, alumni, and stakeholders in her love for this institution and belief in its mission, and most important, in her commitment to CS students and to helping each one of them reach their limitless potential. Trustee Kimbell served as chair of this board from 2020 to 2022. I think I am safe in saying that her tenure was like no other. She led this board through a period never before seen and hopefully never seen again. A tenure of constant challenge, disruption, reimagination, difficult transition, and uncertainty. And through it all, she demonstrated extraordinary grace and resolve and be well-dressed and helped keep our collective focus on advancing our mission. Trustee Kimbell, I admire you. I am deeply grateful for your extraordinary service. I am grateful for your wise counsel, for your support and your friendship. And I know that there are many others, so many, former colleagues and those gathered here today who feel exactly the same way I do. Trustee Clark? I don't call her a hero or superhero. I call her our super shero who does it all while still wearing those heels going backwards. Thank you, and I wish you all the best in your life's next chapter, and I know you also will be a champion, and you will only be a phone call away. Chair Clark?
So I stand corrected. A super shero, that's much better. The conferral of title of trustee emerita of Lillian Kimbell is an action item before the board. May I have a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And the action is approved. Trustee emerita Kimbell, please come to the podium and accept your conferral and honors with a few words.
This has been wonderful. I want to start by thanking Governors Brown and Newsom for having the trust in me to appoint me and reappoint me. I also want to thank our lieutenant governor for her wise counsel during some of the most difficult times when I was chair. So, thank you. It's been an honor, an education, and an adventure to serve on this board. Eleven years ago, at my first board meeting, I spoke about being the first in my family to graduate from college and then attend law school. My mother was born in Mexico and left school at 14 to work in a factory, and my dad worked in construction his whole life. I have never lost my sense of gratitude to California's public higher education system for affording such an opportunity to me, my siblings, and so many others. In this last decade, I've been on every committee, visited every campus at least twice, and served as chair of the board. During the pandemic, I was the Zoom chair. The thing I missed most during that time was interacting in person with our students, faculty, and staff. Most of my colleagues will tell you that the best part of this job is attending commencements. Since my initial appointment in 2014, more than 1,250,000 students, it's a mind-blowing number, have received a CSU degree. And I, and I personally watched thousands cross the stage. In fact, early on, I was thrilled to hand my niece her diploma at Cal State Long Beach. She is now a seasoned special ed teacher, special ed teacher in Orange County. To witness the beaming pride and the joy on the faces of the graduates, moms, dads, abuelos, and tíos is something you just never get tired of seeing. What has always so impressed me about the CSU is its position as the chief engine of upward mobility for Californians, raising many out of poverty and into the middle class and beyond. I am honored to have played a small part in ensuring that the CSU continues to break the class ceiling and help millions achieve their dreams. More than this, our campuses are deeply rooted in community. Our graduates are the teachers, nurses, accountants, law enforcement officers, and administrators. They go back into and enrich and improve the communities from which they came. They are literally the social infrastructure of California. I think we all here understand that, and despite what some political leaders today are claiming, universities are not the enemy, far from it. They are the biggest friend of our future. So, thank you all.
One more, one more, one more.
Thank you, trustee emerita Kimbell. So, we're almost done, but I do not want to rush through this one. Our final action item is the conferral of title of trustee emeritus on Douglas Fagan. Trustee Fagan, as a lawyer by trade, there's almost nothing I appreciate more than a good straight talker. I wasn't, I would not, I wouldn't hesitate to nominate you as one of the finest examples. You have a true gift for distilling complex topics to their essence, helping us to evaluate the best path forward. And while you remain refreshingly direct, I also come to enjoy and appreciate your humor, your warmth, and your generous friendship. And my friend, we will certainly miss you on this board. And I do want to add this. When I, when I got onto the board, I was always kind of like, "Man, why, why is he that way?" And, and I, I would listen to him, and I'd be like, "That's a good point." He said something else. I said, "That's a good point." And once he got to like 100 good points, I decided I want to be more like you. And so, with all due respect to all of our other colleagues, I hereby assure you that in my capacity as chair of the board, over the next, whatever my term is, I want to be the trustee who most emulates you. Chancellor, would you please say a few words?
Just a few minutes ago, I reflected upon trustee Kimbell's long tenure, but she's got nothing on trustee Fagan. His tenure began in 2012. I was just transitioning from my presidency at Cal State Dominguez Hills to my tenure at Cal State Fullerton. So I have been a longtime observer of him too, an admirer, an admirer of trustee Fagan's service. Trustee Fagan's career outside of the CSU is fascinating and impressive, with much of it in media and civil service. And it's not hard to see that experience and the qualities that led to his extraordinary success demonstrated in his work on this board. Curious and conscientious, he delves into issues like an investigative reporter. And you can also see those reporting skills in action as he boldly asks the hard questions of those who present before the board, always respectively, but respectively insistent upon a thorough and responsive answer. The former civil servant shows himself in his appreciation of the subtle nuances of matters presented and in his awareness of potential unanticipated consequences. And of course, the editor is always there, pushing the CSU to tell its remarkable story in new and more compelling ways. Trustee Fagan, you have been someone who also provides wise counsel, who provides the friendship, but also the tough love. But when you sit down and get to know trustee Fagan, you get to know him, you realize he's just a cuddly teddy bear. Trustee Fagan, there's a word that can be overused in higher education parlance, but it applies here. Your service has been consequential. Thank you for all you have done for the CSU. Your work will continue to impact the CSU student for many years to come. I look forward to staying in touch with you. I know you will continue, like our other trustees, to be a champion for the CSU and an advocate for our students. Thank you so much for your years of service. Chair Clark?
Thank you, Chancellor Garcia. The conferral title of trustee emeritus on Douglas Fagan is an action item before the board. May I please have a motion?
No move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, may I please have a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, there being none, any discussion? There being none, the motion passes. Doug, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I hope it's only a coincidence that on the day that I get a named trustee emeritus, an agenda item says, "We got to revise how we decide to make, make people emeritus." You know, well, it's hard to believe, it's been 12 years since my first board meeting. The time zips by when you're having fun. Two days of board meetings every couple of months, that couldn't be bad, but somehow the two-day meetings turned into four, and the every other month turned into, well, a lot more. It has been fun, mixed with gratifying accomplishments and collegial success and outright terror. Twelve years of debates, agreements, and disagreements, our board has always been directed to a single goal, student success. It's always about the students, and I know it's always going to be about the students. So I say thank you to current and past trustees and the faculty, staff, and of course, our presidents for their unwavering commitment to the students. The CSU changes lives and helps ensure a brighter future for our students. Our graduates will make more money, have happier lives, be healthier, be better informed, and use their critical thinking skills to help build a better state and a better nation. I also thank my wife, Giselle Chatrite-Fagan, who's over there, for her understanding, input, and good-natured enthusiasm over my time on the board. And I want to honor my late wife, Dr. Mary Jean Pugh, who was a trustee on this very board from 1975 to 1981. She was Jerry Brown's first appointee to the board after he was originally elected governor. I'm leaving the board exactly 50 years since Mary Jean was appointed. After her passing, Jerry Brown called me to say he wanted to appoint me to the CSU Board of Trustees. A bit surprised, I may have sounded hesitant because he immediately said, "Mary Jean would want you to do this." So 12 years later, here I am. And of course, a big thank you to Jerry Brown. Throughout my dozen years on the board, trustees always felt we were in one crises after another, and each crisis was bigger and more significant than the last. Unfortunately, as I leave the board, the CSU is facing double-edged threats that really are the most significant. On the one hand, proposed state budget reductions would do great damage to the system if enacted. At the same time, the CSU, along with many other institutions in American higher education, must determine how best to accommodate new federal government requirements and obey all laws and regulations while adhering to the basic mission of educational excellence and lifelong knowledge and opportunity for our eligible students. Fortunately, we now have the greatest leadership team to meet those challenges. We have the best board, and Millie Garcia is unquestionably the best chancellor we've had during my entire time. Judgment, knowledge, and a great public presence, she understands and encourages open and honest collegial relationships with the board. CSU is facing existential challenges unlike anything in the past. We need strong, unceasing efforts, similar to a major political campaign. Fight for the future of almost a half million students and the millions of students to come after them. Fight in Sacramento, fight in Washington, and fight to make our case in the media to the public every day. Do not go gently into that good night. Thank you for everything.
She's coming.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for everything.
Well, this is his, and this is mine, and this is his too.
I'm picking up glasses and I'm on.
Yeah. So, thank you, trustee Fagan. We're about done. As we close our March meeting, I want to express my gratitude to my board colleagues for your hard work over the past four days and for your continued engagement this spring as we work alongside our chancellor, our university presidents, faculty, students, staff, and community members. I look forward to joining my colleagues in April as we continue to share the transformational work of the CSU with our state and federal leaders. And I say thank you and Godspeed. The board will reconvene for the next Board of Trustees meeting on May 19, 20, and 21st, 2025. Notices meeting will be sent out in due course 10 days before the meeting. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.
...economically and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers 4,000-plus degree programs at one of the most affordable rates nationwide. At the CSU, more than 80% of students receive some sort of financial aid. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. 64% of students who earned a bachelor's degree during the 2023-2024 academic year graduated with no debt. Last year, we welcomed more than 125,000 graduates as alumni. In total, our network of 4.3 million alumni exceeds the population of 23 U.S. states. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University educates one of the most ethnically, economically, and academically diverse student bodies in the country. More than 460,000 students attend 23 CSUs stretching 800 miles from Humboldt to San Diego. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Nearly one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their families to attend college. And more than half of CSU students are from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds. Welcome to the live